All right, it's. That's me, my bad. Okay, seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started if we can have a roll call, please.
Trusty Marcus, here. Trusty Weekly.
Right here.
Trusty McAvoy.
Present.
Vice President Wells.
Here.
President Lawson.
Here. Okay, welcome. We have very few people in the audience, so I'm gonna go ahead and skip the welcome. Everybody knows how to.
Everybody knows everybody.
Yeah, I don't see any Spanish translation native and everybody knows how to turn in a comment card, so. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved?
Seconded.
All those in paper? Thank you. We do not have oral communication, double check one more time? Okay, so that brings us to six point one, Measure S Bond Program Priorities HVAC Discussion.
Good evening, members of the board. Tonight, we're presenting as a follow up to our discussion at our last board meeting about HVAC. Moving forward with that and environmental controls in classrooms. Tonight, joining us is Eric Van Pelt from Van Pelt Construction. Unfortunately, due to other issues, he couldn't make it down tonight, but he will be joining us from Zoom and sharing the presentation that was sent out earlier today. So Eric, if you're there, I'll hand it over to you.
And thank you, Rick. I appreciate everybody's flexibility with me presenting from Zoom tonight. I'm a little bit under the weather, but I will walk you through the presentation tonight and answer any questions that anybody has. So if everybody can see my screen now, you can see this first slide here is kind of the feedback on what we heard at the August board meeting. So just to recap that, we heard about the temporary cooling solutions. We heard very loud and clear, and we want to roll out those as fast as possible. We heard very loud and clear that there's overwhelming support for the HVAC upgrades cooling throughout the district. We heard that we would like to provide thermostats with that displayed temperatures to each classroom. We are, we want to develop a list of the rooms most impacted by the heat for temporary remediation, and then develop a priority list for sites for HVAC projects in the future. So I'm gonna start with this slide, which is temporary solutions. The one that we talked about, the highest priority one that we talked about at the last board meeting is film and window tinting. We did some research and we wanted to use the room at North Star as the pilot room for that. We reached out to a contractor that does window tinting and he came out and and reviewed those windows. Unfortunately, the windows in that room 100 are composite windows, which means they're not glass, they're plastic windows, and so the thermal tinting really does not work there. Potentially could damage the window. It's not gonna stick, and it's really not gonna provide the thermal benefits that it does on a glass window. So reviewing that and kind of keeping with the theme of thermal rejection and not not getting, not getting that that heat into the classroom, we all, we reached out to a window covering company as an alternative, and they came out and took some measurements of those rooms. And we're gonna get some thermal blinds, thermal window blinds that are of the roll down variety that are going to reject some heat there. This is gonna take a little bit longer than we anticipated for the window tinting because these are not off the shelf items. These are items that are going to have to, that are gonna have to be made. But it's gonna prevent the, it's gonna be a better product for that room, and it's gonna prevent the potential damage to the windows. For the rest of the highest priority rooms, the highest heat rooms, we are right now gonna be surveying those rooms and looking for what windows are compatible. There's a long list of different tinting options that we can use. And for different types of windows, whether they're dual pane, triple pane, composite are the toughest ones because those don't have the, the ability for the thermal tinting to stick well to, and they potentially could cause damage to them when they stick to them and get peeled off. So though the, that is kind of the feedback and what we're doing on the tent. We're, we're also reviewing any other options to displace the heating from those rooms as we're going through to these kind of the highest priority rooms, the hottest rooms that we've, that we're determining. We are determining the hottest rooms through the BMS system that Martin has. He's working with Siemens to help get us that information off the BMS system so we can determine what rooms are the hottest. We have placed the order for the temporary thermometers. We're expecting to arrive middle of next week. These are FDA and NIST certified monitors, so they're not, we know we can rely on the data that they're providing. They hang on the wall. They have an LCD screen, so each classroom can see the temperature, and then they also have a USB port, so we can take them off the wall when we're done with this, and we can download the data and get additional data on temperature and humidity in the room and compare that to the BMS system. So as we continue with this effort as fast as possible to get temporary solutions, we are, we have come into a little bit of an issue with the window compatibility, but we continue to look for alternative solutions for heat rejection in those rooms and to roll them out as fast as possible. So now, speaking a little bit more about the permanent HVAC projects, we continued our assessment of what these projects are going to include, and we just wanted to, wanted to bring this to the group on the what, what different elements of this project includes. It's not a simple equipment installation. So we are going to have to upgrade the electrical distribution system at every site. That is not the PG&E upgrade that we said is gonna, would take an extended amount of time, but each site will require new panels, new conduit, electrical conduit and new wiring to feed those panels. Why? Because, simply because these buildings are so, are aged and they're older. Most of the buildings are, and they don't have the infrastructure to support the power load that's gonna be placed on them with cooling and potentially heat pumps, which I'll talk a little bit more about in, in a slide down the road. We'll also have structural upgrades to do, and this is one thing that we're gonna have to do at all campuses. We're, we're looking at the extent of those, but to put these units on the roofs, to put them, hang them on the walls, on, which we'll be doing in different instances and different sites, there are gonna have to be structural upgrades to those buildings, and this is not just nailing a two by four and attaching the equipment to it. These are actual reinforcing walls, reinforcing roofing, and, and reinforcing the building as a whole versus just adding backing for a unit. We'll also have to install fire alarm upgrades with this added, with these added systems. We're gonna have to have new ductwork, and we're gonna have to have CO detectors as well installed. So that, those will all be installed with the new systems as well. Also roofing upgrades, and this is one that's gonna fluctuate more site to site. There's gonna be some sites where we're gonna be able to place a unit, we're gonna be able to roof around that unit very easily, and it's gonna be a very clean installation. There are gonna be other sites, though, as we're looking at the different roof types, the different slopes, and how the different roofing systems work with the building envelope, that we're going to have to replace a major portion of the roofing in order to mount the units on top of them and potentially replace entire buildings roofing if we, as we're mounting the units, we discover that there's a problem with the building envelope. So we're a set, we're also, while we're up there, we're assessing the roofing and what, what impacts this is gonna have to the roofing system. This is the one that we, I think we all kind of know, the HVAC equipment installation. Obviously, we're gonna install new furnaces. That is the, the fans that push the air, and then that's also the heating component, and then we're gonna install compressors. Those are the component that provide the cool air and the cooling, so both of those will get installed. We do have new controls at this district with the last bond, but again, the controls never had cooling, so there are gonna have to rewire the controls to control the cooling, and then we're gonna also have to install a fair amount of additional ductwork for all of this as well. One thing that is missed quite frequently is this architectural component that I'm talking about here. Depending on the slope of the roof, and that varies from site to site, even from building to building on a site, and the amount of interstitial space that's between the roof and the ceiling, there is going to be a fair amount of interior insulation, I'm sorry, installed in those buildings to support cooling. What happens is if you install cooling in buildings that didn't have cooling before, and you have those spaces there, you get humidity buildup, and you could actually have condensation in the building, so that insulation has to get installed, so you don't have that issue. And then, of course, ADA upgrades, which are required by DSA. Anytime we do a project with DSA, they require a portion of that project to be dedicated to ADA upgrades throughout the campus. So looking at that, it kind of becomes a little bit more daunting than just an equipment installation. We've performed over fifteen, sorry, I'm gonna give you the exact number, nineteen different projects in the last three years in Alameda County and San Mateo County, just kind of picking locations that are close, and we're kind of doing the financial analysis on the square footage of the classrooms. We're looking at about 5.5 million to 7 million per campus, and the bigger campuses obviously are going to be in that $7 million range, and the smaller campuses will be in that 5.5 million dollar range. So there's a little bit of a range there, and it's also gonna depend a little bit as we get a deeper into the design on how we're, how we're going to do this and the structural upgrades and the roofing upgrades. That, I want to reiterate that, that the roofing upgrades are definitely something that we need to keep our eye on because if we get into some of these, some of these older buildings where we're putting the equipment on the roof, and there's some building envelope issues and the roofing is older, we are gonna have to do some pretty major roofing upgrades to those buildings. So planning, planning for summer of 2025 construction. We had a meeting with QKA Architects to discuss the upcoming product, products that we're gonna be using on this, on these different projects. And it was a successful meeting. QKA is helping us with an assessment of the different buildings and the different campuses to help us establish that priority. We're putting together a matrix that takes into account the least amount of structural upgrades, the campuses that are most ready for, for power, for the drain on the power system, the campus with the hottest temperatures, and the campuses with the best roofing, and the campuses with the best fire alarms. So we're trying to, basically, what I'm saying there is we're trying to find the most streamlined campuses, the easiest campuses to install for this first summer since we're, since we're pushing this, pushing the start of this right now in September and trying to get this done for next summer. We're also analyzing the sites, since QKA is doing the master plan for us. We're going to be analyzing the sites so we don't impact the master plan. What that means is we don't wanna put HVAC in a building that we're gonna tear down or modify or do major remodel to. And, and so we're, we're gonna be looking at that in conjunction with the master plan as we continue with that work as well. So couple of questions as we go down. What, what spaces receive cooling? So obviously, the classrooms is one thing we've talked about. Admins, offices, all of those spaces as well. From, from speaking with Martin, the, the MPRs and the gyms are in pretty good shape from cooling, so we'll, we'll get those taken care of with replacements as needed. But the, the plan and the idea is to have complete coverage with cooling throughout the whole entire campus. The next bullet is something that doesn't need to be decided tonight, but it's something that we need to keep our eyes on and keep our thought process on of what product are we gonna use when we go back, heat pumps versus gas-fired units. The, right now, current building code for existing buildings, which is what we're doing right now, allow for gas-fired units to be still being installed. If we're gonna build a new building, we're gonna install what are called heat pumps, which are electrical only units, so they produce their heating and their cooling from electrical only. The gas-fired units, when they fire their, the gas produces the heating and the electrical produces the cooling. So there's a distinct difference there, and, and what that is, is those heat pumps require a significant amount, a significant more amount of power than gas-powered units because of the heating being done by the electrical system versus the gas system. So pros and cons, just from a really high level as we're talking about, talking about this, is heat pumps, they're going to be, the, the equipment is very similar price. It's the infrastructure that supports that. They're gonna draw more power. So as we continue with our assessments, the initial assessments we looked at for power, we, we were assuming that we're gonna be installing gas-fired. We're also gonna look at the potential for heat pumps. This may require more than, more PG&E upgrades than we thought. Additionally, heat pumps are a lot more expensive to run because they run off electricity versus gas, which is, which is a more expensive energy source at the moment. The gas-fired units, while they are cheaper, they are less environmentally friendly because they are using, because they are burning gas. They also require a more robust fire alarm system because, that, that senses for those gas leaks and will set off the fire alarm if there is a gas leak. So that is a decision that has not been made and a recommendation that has not been given, but it's one that we're keeping our eye on as we continue to assess and design these projects and get ready for next steps. And then also, we're keeping a very close eye on the budget amount for these projects as we kind of develop these budgets and get more in line with how much each campus is gonna cost, and we zero in on a campus by campus budget will take that money basically away from the master planning process, so we don't overpromise when we complete the master plan and the implementation plan because we're starting these cooling projects before that's complete. This slide right here shows a quick, is a quick schedule that we put together of the steps to get us to this first summer construction. You can see, I kind of spun it, we've done a little bit of work in the last few weeks, but I spun it off today's date, and you can see that we probably got about a month left of assessments. From that point on, we'll go into the design phase, and we'll work with our design team on putting together those design documents and making sure that they're complete and ready. Then in February, we would target a DSA submission, and we would expect those DSA drawings to come back out in May. And then, and then also, this is a really important one, too. We also would need to order the equipment in February to make sure that the equipment arrives on time and, and ready to be installed. So that's a very key date to hit, is have drawings ready in February so we can order equipment and get submitted to the. Then we would go into the bidding phase where we would bid competitively bid the project, the construction portion of the project, and then we would hit the, the summer portion and do, do the work at the three campuses over the summer, June through August. I believe June 4th is, is the last day of school, and I don't have a first day of school yet, I believe for 2025, but in, assuming it'll be somewhere in the first couple of weeks of August, we'll land there for construction, and then document closeout after that, which will be occupied, will be ready to use the units. But we'll, we'll just be financially closing the project out and getting all the turnover documents, the ASBILs, the warranties, the manuals, and all of that in those last couple of months. Final slide is just talking a little bit about what we're gonna be doing over the next two months and the next steps that are involved there. In September, we're, like I said, we've got the thermometers that are gonna arrive next week, the middle part of next week. We're working with Martin and his team to get those installed across the district and get those installed in September. We're also gonna be in the temporary measure installation, tinting where available, window shades where tinting is not an option. In October, we'll have the determination of the Phase One scope, so basically what that means, it means that we will have the, the the idea on what campuses we want to work on and where the, and why. We'll also, at that point, initiate a contract with our, with our design team that will select from the architectural pool, and then in November, we'll move right into the HVAC design for Phase One schools, for the Phase One schools. You can see that schedule that it is definitely, it's tight, but it's doable this time if we keep, if we keep the, the ball bouncing and everybody moving forward and, and with this process and this, this schedule that we're talking about. With that said, I've done a lot of talking here for ten minutes or so. I'm open to any questions or any discussions that anybody would like to have related to this.
Thanks, Eric. Anybody have questions?
Hey, thanks so much for showing up on Zoom and walking us through this. I really appreciate that second slide in particular. It's really nice to be heard. We were trying to be heard really clearly. This is an important issue. We want to prioritize, and it feels like that was, that was really received clearly. We said we wanted to see timelines and credible estimates, and it feels like that was substantively what the discussion was here today. So I really, really appreciate that. I'll be interested when we can get some of those VMS data pulls from Siemens about like just prioritization stack rank for the next sort of level of detail, peeling the next layer of the onion in terms of like, what is the plan for what we're addressing? I love that we're digging into heat rejection. Thanks. I feel heard on that also. I'm glad we're looking at different ways of just preventing the heat energy from getting into the classroom in the first place. Interesting to surface the question around heat pumps. You know, I think the point around efficiency on electricity versus gas is mostly in the heating direction versus the cooling direction, and heating is not a large problem in Redwood City. So I think being really specific to the deployment of these HVAC units here in Redwood City, the number of days per school year that we are currently struggling in the classrooms because they're too cold for effective instruction has not been a complaint I have yet heard surfaced to the board. It's possible that in the middle of winter, we're having some issues, but this would be the first I would have heard of them. So I don't think we have a heating problem in the district. I think we have a cooling problem in, in the district. So I think that however we make our decision on that should really be focused around like, what's long term gonna be the least regrettable decision? And for its primary mode of operation, which is likely to be cooling rather than heating, are we happy with, with how that nets out? And taking into account some of the other plans that we've talked about here in terms of solar, for instance, for electricity production, and hopefully batteries as well for, for backup and independence. Some of the smaller items here were a little bit of a head scratcher for me, like in terms of carbon monoxide detectors. Obviously, that would be more in terms of if we were installing gas burners for, you know, gas-powered HVACs because electrically powered heat pumps don't generate carbon monoxide. So like that might actually in some sense simplify some components of this, acknowledging that there's more electrical load and more wiring that needs to be done there. Obviously, any of the roof work that might end up needing to be done, we'd want to integrate with the solar plan. Would be pretty silly of us to go and spend a whole bunch of money to put up new roofs and then whoopsie pupsie, oh yeah, we wanted to do solar and tear it out the new roof to go and put in solar and another roof. So we'd, we'd probably want to integrate those plans. Great. This feels like we had some strong opinions. We offered them. We were heard. I feel good about that. I feel good about heat pumps personally versus using gas burners, just given the focuses on the cooling rather than heating, and thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to make a, just to clarify something. Eric, isn't it, carbon detectors are requirement now of HVAC installs regardless of type?
So CO2
Yeah, CO2.
Are required regardless of type. CO are required for gas.
Got it. CO2. That's a good thing monitor for other reasons, but okay.
Thanks, Eric, for the presentation. One thing I just wanted to check on was I, there were a lot of ideas that were kicked around at the last board meeting, and I see two temporary ones that, that came back here. Were there other temporary ones that, I was trying to rack my brain and look through like notes from the last time. I know we talked about like things that were too loud and we knew to just reject them at that point, but were there other ones? I thought there was like
White, white topping?
Well, there was like a temper, I thought there was a temporary HVAC one or something.
The solar reflective.
The solar reflective, and then we were also talking about those swamp coolers. Okay, and that was it. Okay. Yeah, that, I just wanted to know if we like, because it sounds like the temporary mitigations are shade for now, and then work on an HVAC project, which it's I mean, it sounds like a challenge to be able to coordinate with the facilities master plan while it's being developed concurrently and so I'd be interested to see how that works, because I think that's really, that is really important. It's similar to David's comment about the solar plan. You know, we just want to make sure that we're not doing silly redundant work. So I think that, you know, it'll be, be interesting to see how that stuff comes around. One thing on processes, like when, when do we say go? Like at what point do we say, hey, we're committed on, this is a project that we want to do and go forward? Right now, we're still kind of in information gathering stage, so it's not like we've sat and set up a budget for the bond, but at what time would be, would the board be asked to say, this is a project we want to fund, take it out of silly master's plan, and let's go?
So that's gonna be when we need to start spending money, which is gonna be in next month when we are gonna bring forward a contract for architectural services to you, and that'll be the first major contract that we bring forward for this project, and that'll be where we're gonna commit a significant amount of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars to this effort, and that would be when we would ask you for the, for the go, go, go.
Okay, yeah, because this, this is, I mean, it's not a small project. It's along the lines of each site. I think of what Measure T would call like the modernization ones, right? It's not a rebuild size project. Those would be much bigger, but it was around around the size of like what was a modernization budget about? Is that sound right? Okay. Cool. Yeah, I think that was, that was about it. I will, I know we're not asked to decide whether we want to do heat pumps or, or gas-fired, but heat pumps feel to me like the right direction, the right message to send to the community and everything going forward. So when we get to that decision, that's sort of how, what I'm gonna be bringing as, as my thoughts towards it.
Thank you.
This is Elisa. Thanks, Eric. Appreciate the presentation and all the thought that went into it in just the last couple of weeks, so really appreciate that. One question is, could we get those slides, of course, because I'd like to dig into them a little bit more, and then could we get them on the public agenda so people can also see them? I know that they were, you were using every last minute, and you know, we had agendized, but we just didn't get the slides ahead of time, so that would be helpful. I just want to reiterate, reiterate on the heat pumps. I mean, I might have my mind changed as a little more technical or cost information comes in, but I firmly believe we ought to go electric heat pumps unless there's a true reason not to do it, because I think we're all trying to be mindful of climate action, do our part. Students are asking for this. Families are asking for this. The community, I just feel like we have to do it. We had talked about, you know, putting in solar and batteries to offset the costs. So you know, that's sort of a package I guess we need to see, but assuming that we've got the solar, hopefully that would offset a lot of the extra heating costs as you move from heating with gas to electric. I think right now, the reason we don't hear about heat, David, I was thinking is because we have heaters that are working, and my guess is they're mostly natural gas. I don't know. And so the cost would go off up unless we offset that with our own solar. So I think that's just something we need to think about, and ideally, we could get to a cost neutral standpoint because we're, we're making enough of our electrical energy. And I will say that we have put in heat pumps, and overall, they're more energy efficient certainly than older systems were, so, but I'm assuming, Eric, you kind of accounted for that in your conversation. So that's just one comment. Again, you know, I guess we have to see it. One of the things I thought might be useful is to overlay the timeline we saw tonight with the timeline of the update of the facilities master plan, because I do think it's gonna be critical to identify kind of Mike and I think David, you probably mentioned this, is, you know, where are those bigger upgrades we're gonna do? Which of the buildings are we pulling down so we don't waste any money by putting anything in a building that we're tearing down? I realize there's a little more time on that, but we should be able to go back. I mean, I think there's a few we know are pretty obvious. They were, they almost made the list on the last bond. I would be surprised if they didn't continue forward. Those are some of those really older classrooms at a few sites that we talked about. They almost made the list on the last bond. I would be surprised if they didn't continue forward. Those are some of those really older classrooms at a few sites that we talked about. Um so I think we need to get it a little bit. I guess you're going to get a handle on that before you choose your three sites that you're moving forward with. Um and then the only other thought I had was um. If there are some classrooms that are really hot that we know are really old that are going to come down in. The next bond, could we just put up portables with. Nice heating and cooling units sooner than we might otherwise to accommodate that as opposed to spending a lot of money on temporary upgrades. To accommodate that. I know that's a lot and it may be that it just costs more to do that, so we wouldn't do that. But it did get me thinking, the more we spend on temporary upgrades, there's less money for the others. So if there's a way to. Um do that, that might be worth thinking about.
I I think that's a that's a very good point. Um and that's one thing that uh John, John is one of the architects that's helped us with this assessment. And I talked about it's going to be a very tight, tight rope to walk to make sure that we waste, don't waste any money. Um in coordinating with the master plan and it's something we're going to be working on uh over the next month. Um but uh that we did talk about that. If we start to see in the master plan that we need temporary housing, that that definitely could be something that's looked at.
Yeah, because that might be a way to accommodate particularly some of those really hot classrooms because even with putting in the extra. Solar blinds or whatever you call them, it still may not cool that enough because you've got a lot of sun coming in on those old cement uh walls. And I would imagine those were also coming into class. I mean, it's partly the windows, but it's more than that. So anyway, good. Well, I'm glad the architect is thinking about that. Um and I think everything else I heard sounded good. I I will look at the slides a little bit more to see if there was anything else that I missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think everything um that I wanted to say has been said. Um my biggest thing was obviously when doing the um. Looking at the old buildings and the conduits and you know, doing that assessment that you know, again, we're sure that we're going to be. Doing the work in the classrooms where they're not going to be, you know, knocked down or remodeled. Um and then when QKA is done with their assessment, is this just for? The first three schools?
Yeah, this is uh this would just be for we're focusing on the the phase one with what we're calling phase one, which would be. For that first summer, the those first schools, absolutely. Um once we kind of get over that design um. Uh where it's going to be a big push from now until the first of the year to get as much of this work done as possible. But once we get over that hump, um I would say probably in about February or March, we'll start looking ahead till the next summer. Um already that soon. Um so um really, like like I said, this this initial one will be just looking at those first. That first summer and those those first schools that we selected.
And thanks, I'm sorry. Just to add on to that, so they're going to do an assessment uh across all school sites right now, right, to determine. Which ones would be like potential, let's say five, right? And then they'll take a deeper look at those five to determine. You know, one, two or three, right? We might be, we might come back to the board and say it's only reasonable to get two school sites done next summer based on the complexity. Or other issues uh that we'd have to mitigate in order to add HVAC. So that's the work that we're doing right now to bring that smaller list back to. The internal committee to be able to provide you rationale and reasoning for why this one, two or three schools. Uh would be uh the best choice to go forward, taking into account. Uh potential future uh facility master plan initiatives that would be at that site, which. You know, if we're going to tear down a building, we don't want to do that to the point that that all of you have made tonight. Uh and so that might change some of the priority too that, well, we'll do this one and this one. And the rest will come at a later time because and probably the biggest thing in Eric's touched on it. Is we're going to have a really short window in the summer and we have kind of a short runway to get to the summer, right? So. Um as he mentioned, we're going to order the equipment as soon as we know what specifications and what sites are going to go. Uh to DSA that way that that equipment is, you know, so to speak onsite when we have a contractor that will come and do the work. Uh and then as he just mentioned, when we get to that February, March timeframe in there. There'll be another group of schools that come forward for the summer of twenty six, so that work can be got began, you know, six months earlier than we're doing right now. Five to six months earlier, so that ideally we'd be bidding on those projects. You know, in December and January, so we're at the front of the construction teams. And not trying to find a construction team that can fit in at the last minute, right? So. Uh that's why this next summer might be a little bit different than future summers, just based on timing.
Um thank you. I think all of my questions have been covered. Um I do want to circle back to what David had mentioned, the solar reflective coating. I, there happened to be an article in. Like Business Journal or something that was um published this week about school districts trying to keep their um school sites cooler and. That seemed to be one that um actually a lot of schools are fo- focusing on and seem like it can cut temperatures down by ten, ten degrees or more. Um which is pretty significant. Um.
And and what sort of measures did you hear about or?
What, sorry?
To bring it down ten percent, what sort of measures is it just?
Ten degrees.
Oh, ten degrees?
Ten degrees, yeah. Um I mean, I can, I can send you a link to the article I was reading.
See the article, I was just.
Yeah, I'll I'll send the link after the meeting. Um. Interestingly, it actually comes in lots of different colors because when you said white, my eyes go, oh no, like that would, that would make me crazy. I'd have to have sunglasses on everywhere I go. My eyes are too sensitive for that. Um but yes, so I think that's worth exploring. Um I don't know what like the life of the coating would be of. If maybe it's not even worth the money if it's going to with the heavy traffic that we get on our school sites, maybe if it's only the last two years, is it worth it kind of thing? Um but it's worth exploring, especially for schools that aren't going to be getting um. A HVAC upgrade for a couple of years, so.
And that's, I mean, I I think that's great. It's like, it's the size of intervention that we need. We don't live in a climate that's i- is seeing a hundred and twenty Fahrenheit. Temperatures or is or is going to, right? In the in the reasonably near term. So like. An extra ten degrees is the entirely the margin that we need to get from uncomfortably hot, having trouble focusing to perfectly serviceable classroom.
Um otherwise, so Eric, this is under a discussion item. I don't know if you needed any direction from us at this point. Is there something you need?
No, I I we do not need any direction at this point. Um we'll be moving forward with the assessment, like I said, over the next month and then. The big, the the hinge point and and the direction we'll need is next month when we bring that architectural contract back.
Anything else? All right. Thank you very much for being with us, Eric.
Very cool.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate you and and thanks again for letting me attend by Zoom. I appreciate that.
Sure. Okay, that brings us to seven point one, discussion on budget renewal initiative.
Okay, perfect. So I wanted to give you, yeah, go ahead. I'll wait to you get on. Okay, go on to the next slide. Go on to three. So I know you've seen this in a format that was given to you as a draft and uh we took the input that we received from board members. And what I want to do tonight is to not only explain to you, but to our public, um the manner in which we're going to proceed proceed. To definitely um give our stakeholders, our stakeholders being our community, being our staff. Uh and in some cases at the middle school, our students, uh the opportunity to really weigh in on the manner and how we're going to move forward. With the um plan of our reduction for next year. I heard loud and clear about the transparency and how we need to do more of it. And as we go through the slides, feel free to ask me any questions. So definitely I want to um make sure that we are very transparent to all stakeholders. There is going to be community engagement and I will explain that as we uh get into another slide. Um I just learned today about an AI participation that we may be doing with this part of community engagement. I'm going to see a demo on Friday, but but you know, it's worth trying. It gets more people involved and Jorge found that for us and. Uh Anna would like to see it also when she has time because it may even help with the LCAP. So we want to make sure as we're doing this that we definitely give the data that parents. Staff need to have as to the reasons why we're going in this direction and um. Our wonderful CBO will be giving the presentation on un-audited actuals at our next board meeting. And there you will see the amounts of dollars that we will go forward with with reduction. Uh next slide. So the committee makeup and in talking to the principals this week on, oh my gosh, it was Monday, right? I'm talking to principals on Monday, um wanted them to know that on this Friday, there is going to be an application going out to. Community members at each of our schools, our parents and guardians and asking them if they would like to be on. A larger committee for the budget. It's a budget committee where they're going to learn about. Why reductions, they're going to learn um what we have at each of our school sites, what could be a possibility of not having at our school sites. What could be possibilities that school sites could pick up? And so the large committee will definitely hear information. On that, uh our staff will hear it too. And then I would like to have two trustees on that committee with me. It will help me with planning. It will help me especially if we go down this road with the AI to really um understand that and truly um. Put the information that AI needs to move forward with what I'm asking the community and other stakeholders to provide us with their information. And that will bring it back to you for further discussion and also to. Help us rec- make our, help me make my recommendations to you at a board meeting. So uh. My next, go to the communic- communication plan. Here we go. Come on, here we go. So we're we're really dedicated to having these meetings and and Jorge has already put in place. On the website, every time there is a meeting, what the agenda will be in regard to the uh larger group meeting. But also what was um taken at those meetings in turn for input from our members in turn of next steps. He will, I will, we will give updates and then we'll reprovide, and this is where the AI is going to come in. Um feedback forms. So what you do is you create and I just, on and I just saw a piece today in which. Santa Clara Unified School District, Gary Waddell's district, and those of you. David probably doesn't know, gave her, Gary Waddell was a member of the county office of Ed. He was the deputy superintendent. Gary Waddell is using this, this platform. It's called um Thought Exchange. And the demo that I saw today, I have not seen an LCAP or a budget presentation, but I'm hoping to see that. I think I can do it on Friday at ten thirty, but it gets. It has ourselves as a district put in information that we would like to not only share with our with our audience, our stakeholders. But also receive information back from them. It leads them through a process. I want to utilize that along with. What the school sites are going to be doing with their school site councils, PTOs, PTAs and their ELACs. What I've asked principals to do and the dates are not up here yet um is to give me dates. I have their dates of their site council meetings for each month, but I think I'm going to need an extra one. And at that extra one, they can bring in. School site council, PTAs or PTOs and their ELAC for that extra meeting to look at. The information that has been presented to the larger committee, bring it down to the school sites and then get you those dates. So if you want to partake in those meetings and have, we'll have a district representative there with you. I'm going to try and get them so they're not all, you know, everybody's doing it with same date, same times and so forth, because you know how back to school nights are and open houses and. We can't do that. So uh that's that's plan and and moving forward. You see. The next dates, if you go to the next slide six, for the. Yeah, for the committee meetings, we have our first one. Well, let me back up. The first information night is actually going to be. Next week on Monday, eh for our superintendent's advisory committee. With the superintendent's advisory committee, you know, there is at least one or two parents from each school site and we are. Are uh definitely have that and then for our Latino population or Spanish speaking population, we will do that same presentation the following week. And I have Cecilia that'll be with with us um at those meetings, but they're held in the morning. They're held in the morning because they're all done in Spanish. And that's the um opportune time that parents requested as opposed for us doing a Spanish meeting. Totally in Spanish at in the evening for them. It's hard for them to attend with working second jobs and then also others that are at home preparing and so forth dinner and. Kids homework and getting kids to bed and so forth. So I get it. So we're doing that. But at that first meeting that we have, which. Alisa and Cecilia are part of, I'm going to go through this explanation with the superintendent's advisory council. And then they will go back and give that information at school site council meetings with their principals. So our first meeting is going to be on October tenth from six to eight PM. And at that meeting, we are definitely going to have our presentation from our CBO. He's definitely will be there. And be giving the overview of the budget and the rationale for going in this direction. Why is this happening? Then we will, after that meeting, we will move forward and from the minutes from that meeting and. We are going to do this, we we're doing it both in person and hybrid, so um. Will have a recording of the meeting if people were not there to attend, so they can attend it. But also Jorge is going to be there and be able to write notes and at the same time, after we're done, put them up on that one. Page that he has at this point in time that has to deal with the budget, this overview that we're doing. So that's the October sixth meeting. Then there is um another meeting, the second meeting of the Thursday, October twenty fourth. Where we're going to review other budget facts. And at this meeting, I really want to get questions from that committee. Um and their thinking. And this is where I'm hoping that. With this demo that I'm going to see and depending on how much it costs, um determine if I start using the AI right here also with this group. I mean, it was kind of cool to see what it what it came up with, but I want to see what Gary's doing in 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 Santa Clara Unified. Because he's done all his budget budget reflections and budget reductions and feedback utilizing it. And he's also done the LCAP and that's what I think Anna is really interested to. And it's getting. What it what it's intent is to get out to all the stakeholders and then when you present information and you want to get. Data on the way, on how people are thinking, it does those questions for you and then it. Sends out some really nice data sheets for you to look at and make decisions. So that will be on the. Second meeting and then on our final meeting, which is on the fourteenth, what we will do is. If we've used the AI portion, that committee is going to re- be going to review the results. And from those results, AIs, if we use this, will give us recommendations in how we should go. And then we'll discuss that and then we'll bring it back to you. Now, what I don't know about this platform is how much we get to play with it. Uh which would be very interesting and um hopefully I will be able to see the demonstration on Friday at ten thirty. But the dates that are not in here and just to remind you are the dates that schools are going to start working with their site councils, PTAs, PTOs. And once I have those dates, I will put them on the um. Not only on this sheet, but also on the uh website where you will have those dates and I'll make sure. Again, that they're not the same days or the same evenings and times because that's really hard for any of us to be there. But it would be, you know, board members and then um a district office person will be there also, whether it be Rick, whether it be Anna, whether it be Wendy or myself.
And the superintendent's newsletter because people read that.
Yeah, it's in the super, it will be, yeah, definitely, definitely. Um sure.
Just to clarify, so the the school site ones, then we'd want to make sure there was at least one board member. And one staff person at each of those. Okay, because we would be the ones sort of giving the information and taking any feedback people have, right?
Any feedback and if this AI piece is available at that time, it all depends. I want to see the demonstration first and I've ca- I've sent Gary Waddell an email. He says he loves it. Oh, I just gotta go, can I? He says he loves it. Oh, I just got, I go, can I see it? I want to see what, what he's done. You may be also introduced, we may be introducing that too, to get further information. Not only from that site council, but from the other community members, you know, I'm going to see how that works.
Yeah. So then when you have those dates, I guess, you know, just share those with us and then we can figure out who can go to which ones. Yeah. Okay.
There is, there is, as you can see on, on the slide eight, it has the communication plan, there's a dedicated section on Redwood City, the website. So it'll have the summaries of the meetings, it'll have updates that have taken place at these meetings. And then those feedback forms, again, if I go with that platform with AI, we're going to get the feedback from that. So I think this is a plan that everybody can participate in. Whether you participate in person, whether you want to do it virtually, whether you definitely, I want to get as much information from people who cannot come to a meeting, whether it be virtual or whether it be in person. And I, the way to get around that is to use that platform from what I understand. And I would like to, you know, like I say, I want to see it. And if it's something that I feel that it's going to benefit us, not only in these two arenas for budget review, budget reflection questions, not only the AL cap, but other items that we want to get more input from our stakeholders. Questions?
Just real fast, can you just scroll through the rest of the slides? I don't think we got to see the whole slide deck. There was a communication plan and then there's, is that the end? Oh, that was the end. Okay. Okay, I'll start. So yeah, I, I, this is, this is a good amount of outreach. I think that that's super helpful. I think it's great to set up a committee and like kind of pull those people in. But I'm really glad to hear about the outreach part too, beyond, beyond just pulling people into the committee. Doing the superintendent's advisory committee, I think is a good one. Getting to the school site councils, I think is, is an important one too. I didn't hear you mention, but I think you were going to cover DLAC and ELACs as well.
So what we're going to do is we're asking for, and this is where Michelle Ramon comes in and plays a a heavy piece for us because she has quite a bit of a relationship with our Latino community. And being that it's all done in Spanish and Cecilia attends meetings with myself, especially the superintendent's advisory council meetings in Spanish. We are, she's doing a heavy push, a heavy push to get as many people to that as possible. The piece that I really liked of the AI piece that we looked at today, the demo that we got, it wasn't as specific as I had hoped. That's why I wanted to see Santa Clara's because it tells you exactly what they did and how they utilized it. Is that I want, the, the idea is that we get our Latino families to come to the meetings, why we're having these meetings. And then we train them how to utilize the device and how to go through the questions and the responses that were, that we would like to hear from them. So that's one way that we're going to tackle that. Now, we have, we have to put those meetings into place. And I know depending on like the, your, Cecilia works, she has a full-time job, so she can, but whatever work schedules are available that she can attend because she is the face of, of the board. Because the board, and this is not that they don't all respect you, but I mean, she speaks directly to them in Spanish. She has been, she was an immigrant that came to the United States, went through our school system. So it's a whole different ballgame when I'm with them. And I think they're very open, they're very open to just telling her everything. Which is great, which is, which, which we need, right? What? Yeah, which is what we want, which is what we want. So it'll probably be more than that one meeting. But for those of us that are, you know, Spanish speaking, I think it really helps that, you know, we don't do any translations that we move forward. And that's what we do in these meetings.
Cool. And you know, in terms of the plan, I, I like the objectives around transparency, community engagement, and then how it's going to be supported in there. The clear timeline, like the meetings are already set up when they're going to be, when it's going to come to the board. And then the communication deliverables, I thought was really handy. It kind of sets everybody's expectation, you know, around what the website's going to have, what's going to be put on the website and having that put in place so that we're not like two months in with someone saying, I thought this was going to happen or it wasn't delivered here. Like we kind of know how it's going to happen, what the vehicle is upfront. That's, that's really helpful to have in place.
I think some of the questions that we will receive from the community and also what the principals were thinking. The individuals that spoke to me goes, isn't this really early that you're doing this? And I said, it really is early. It's really, and you want us to, yes, it's real early. If things change, then you know, you, we go back and we, we review and it'd be great if they changed. But if, you know, not the plan is already here and they need to move forward. And one of the things that we also had discussed is that we're losing, you know, two of our longtime members.
Yeah.
And we wanted them to partake, partake and not to have two new members who are just coming on board to start having to do that. Yeah.
And then lastly, Cecilia, thank you so much for being on the board. I really appreciate the, the representation that you provide for us. So I, I really appreciate it.
And then just to let you guys know that I already had COVID that day. I was not feeling myself. So the day of the, the interview, I'm assuming that's what you're talking about?
Or just any of the meetings that you go to that Dr. Baker was just talking about.
Okay, I thought you were referring to the email that Alyssa had sent when, because I said representation, sorry. I was thinking the CSBA. Anyway.
Yeah.
Never mind. I was thinking of another thing, but thank you, thank you guys. I appreciate it most.
Yeah. So I, I think it sounds like a great plan. I think you said, but I just want to confirm that in addition to everything that you talked about and all the different opportunities that people will have to input, there will be information in the principal's newsletters and the superintendent newsletter. Okay. And I really like the idea of the in-person opportunities as well as this opportunity to provide input through a survey because not everybody can make a meeting. So I think that's great. I'm excited to see this platform, to see how it works. It sounds like it's like a super Google spreadsheet, you know, but because you could do a Google form where you gather the data, but then we're having to sort of just read through it. But it sounds like it would help us synthesize it a little bit.
And analyzes it.
Yeah, I think that's fantastic. So I look forward to seeing that. And I'm also happy to participate in the variety of the forums. And I also want to just say thank you, Cecilia. I wish we had another bilingual or two members on our board because I know it's a lot that you get asked to do, but thank you.
And obviously I do it because I, I love to do this. And I've said, I'm like, it would be so great if this was my full-time job because I would be like everywhere. But unfortunately I'm limited. So.
Similar to the last presentation, I feel like we were hurt. We had some strong opinions about like, it's really important that we do this in a very open, transparent way and to plug them with the community. And gosh, it sure looks like that's what's happening here. So that's fantastic. I'll join the rest and take my hat off. It's really good that we're able to find flexible ways to connect with the community on their own terms, in their own places, on their own time, to make sure that everybody is a part of this process. Something that I've emphasized, I just want to make sure it doesn't get lost here, is that not only working with like school site councils, but explicitly reaching out to PTOs for our school sites that do have PTOs to communicate with the president, president of the PTO, the co-presidents and like give them the baton like, hey, part of your job is to make sure that everybody in the school knows that this is going on right here. So just again, to, I, I, I don't think we can err on the side of either being too early or yelling too much about this, this, this coming. So it's, and it's going to be like the seventh time somebody hears it that it's going to register, oh, whoa, this is happening. Oh, okay. Right? So we, we will need to say it seven times to the point where it feels annoying that we're repeating ourselves on it. So I think it's awesome that we're, we're learning that lesson there. And I'm also hearing like that we're starting to think about publishing things in terms of topic pages, websites that we keep updated, that we can just point people to. So that's been a, you know, thing that I'm excited about, you know, for us keeping the public up to date on certain topics like this. So that's great. Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. I think it really well lighted up. So I know you want two board members. Are you wanting that tonight to be decided?
Hoping it could be decided tonight because this is a must run way.
Yep. Is there anybody who's interested in being a part of that?
I would be, but the dates are not great for me that you chose. I can make one out of three, but.
Okay.
Cause it's really the three committee meetings.
It's really the three committees.
The board study session.
The boards, there, there, there is a board study session that will be on here, which is.
I'll leave myself available and there's cake on November 14th.
I know it's your first.
We will.
I approve cake being provided.
I mean, I, I wouldn't be able to do it on the, either the 24th or the 30th. I don't know yet. That's, that's kind of like my own conflict.
I can do the 24th.
I'm available for all of those.
There you go.
But do you?
I, I've got nutters travel between now and the end of the year.
Thank you.
Perfect. It's Cecilia. All right. Great.
Hey, one other thought, just I, I had a thought as you were talking. Cause you mentioned the PTA, PTOs. So it got me thinking, you know, in addition to sort of budget cuts, which we know we need to do. We also, also ought to talk about potential budget revenue sources. So one thought I had is we should make sure we're engaging the Redwood City Education Foundation, which I know their charge has been more recently on three of our school sites. But historically they did have a charge of the whole district and helping to fundraise gaps that we had that were really important for every kid in the district. So there may be an opportunity to maybe work with them, maybe get other people interested in a collective effort for the district, not just a classroom or a school site. So that got me thinking on RCF. And then also just PTA, PTOs, I think as we talk to them, since they typically are the fundraising arm of school sites. Hopefully we can ask them to think about not just their own school site, but again, the district as a collective. Cause some of these are really important positions we're talking about, like mental health and I mean, potentially, we don't know exactly what the list can be, but we know what the extras were that we paid for with COVID money. And one of the big things that everybody asked for was mental health and counseling and that we have been paying for with the pandemic money. And, and then I was thinking in the survey, could we have a place where parents and community members and staff could give us ideas for any grants or foundations or connections they might have with family foundations or wealthy individuals? As we know, we've been very fortunate to have a few wealthy individuals in our community support our schools. Dr. Baker, I know you, you have your sources, but maybe there's some other people that might come forward. We never know. So if we could have a couple of lines there to solicit ideas, I think that would be great. And maybe AI can generate some good ideas for us. Maybe with those, they can come up with some places we could apply. Anyway, thanks.
All right. Thank you. We are on consent calendar.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. 9.1 adoption of resolution number four, approval of ed code entitled five options for D.
Thank you. So for tonight, these are the standard ed code options, but you see something new on there, which is teachers on special assignment and speech and language. So under title five, we do have 30 days from the start of the assignment. And so we will be focused primarily on classrooms. Then we shift gears to out of classroom. So that's why the document reflects as such. And then a couple of changes in elective classes that happened last minute. Any questions?
We have a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. 9.2 adoption of resolution number five in favor of California Prop 2.
Everybody knows what Prop 2 is, right?
Yeah. So the California School Boards Association is asking all the school districts to approve a resolution similar to this. And we thought it would be a good idea to bring it forward as soon as possible. And CSBA will be collecting all of them and then submitting them to those that be. And I think it'll just help pass it. And hopefully we'll get some money out of it to help with our bond and our facilities. So I'll make a motion to approve if there's no questions or concerns.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Thank you. 9.3 board bylaw, 9223, second reading and approval.
So at the last board meeting, there was a discussion on this particular board bylaw. And I was asked to ensure, we had some editing items, so that was done. That was easy. And then the second item, I emailed the response from our attorney regarding number, let's see, number 12, move on page two in regards to supplemental bonds. And that was clarified under advisement of the attorney was to remain as, as it is stated here. And actually doesn't pertain to school boards in California, but it's best not to eliminate an item within this board bylaws. I wanted to just be clear on that direction that was advised.
Comments or questions?
I appreciate the deindent and I appreciate you running the absurd framing to ground, even if I grit my teeth that we're going to have to accept the absurd framing. So thank you for, for entertaining the dialogue.
We have a motion to approve.
So moved?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And 9.4 approval of response to the 2324 grand jury report.
Yeah, we're going to get to that. I'll go ahead, start, start and then I'll jump in.
I was gonna do that again, everyone.
It's just like, and. It's okay.
So tonight we're bringing forward a response to the San Mateo, the 2324 San Mateo grand jury in June of this year. They issued a report regarding internal controls of county agencies, including school districts. Prior to the release of the report, the grand jury conducted an investigation, including a survey, which we did participate in and interviews with selected agencies and school districts, which we were not selected for an interview. Also, the findings and recommendations are general and require a response from the school district, but they're not targeted at Redwood City. It was the same findings and recommendation for all noted entities in the report. The report listed three findings and recommendations that Redwood City is required to respond to. The letter in response to the report was included in the board packet. I'm not going to read that tonight. We were asking for approval to send the response to the cemetery, San Mateo grand jury.
So there were several districts that were put into this situation. And at the last superintendent's meeting, we had the attorneys there and everybody was just livid with, including the county. With what? We answered the survey properly and honestly. And then you get back this letter, they want this. And, and the attorney said, let us handle the response. And so this is the responses and send this to the, to the grand jury. The grand jury in the past has given us tasks to do. And we never find out why we had to do them or there's a response back. So the council, council was there, several council members, several attorneys were there and said, this is what we're asking. This is what we want you to respond back. So that's the letter that you have in your pack.
Well, I, I thought it was an excellent response because I think what the grand jury participants didn't fully understand is school districts have a lot of accountability and reporting already and a lot of internal and external controls. So it may be that some of the entities they reviewed didn't have as much as school districts, but school districts in California, as we know, are overly regulated, overly, you know, reported all over the place. So yeah, I thought it was an excellent response. I was really pleased to see that we basically said, we'll continue to do what we do, you know, and, and we feel good about that. So anyway, thank you. And actually on this note, I don't know if you noticed, but one of the laws, I don't know if Gavin Newsom has signed it yet, but it did get approved by the state legislature. It was the one that CSBA was pushing around, trying to identify all the reports that school districts have to provide to the state of California. And they're going, the state of California now has to report back to us, everything they're asking us to do. And what we're hoping that will happen is they'll start to identify, oh my goodness, this is what school districts are having to do to say legal. So anyway, I just thought that was very much in line with our response here. So anyway, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that comment. I'm sorry, David. Okay. I agree with that comment. I also point out that I saw that a couple of their school districts, and I'm sure more are coming, have already approved a letter that follows the same format at their board meetings. So we're not, we're not the only ones that are putting that in. I think, I don't remember how many school districts were part of the entities that were listed, but I imagine they're all going to respond the same.
12 out of the 23.
Awesome. Thanks.
Not including other com T entities.
Just, just the school districts. They were 12, I don't know if I got it. 24, 28, total.
Now it's going to be the thrust of my question is like, is the, the form of the letter seems like it, it could have been a response from several different districts. What's the degree to which ours has overlap with the others? And I'm hearing this is substantial overlap with how many.
Yeah. Minus the name, I couldn't see anything different. Yeah.
Yeah. I think because we all have the same requirements to the state of California.
Right. So we don't have any specific identified con- internal control deficiencies. We have a number of different processes that were required by law to execute. We're executing those processes. We're not aware of any non-compliance with those inner, i- i- in, internal controls processes. We have a third party auditor who goes and audits our financials and audits our internal processes and signs off on sufficiency of those processes.
We have the county officer there.
We have the federal compliance monitoring that we just completed, right?
And, and those third party reports of the sufficiency of the internal controls are presented to the board of directors. It is something that we approve. It's on the public record. So I, I'm, I, I think it's really important that we take seriously, are we conducting ourselves properly? Are we spending taxpayer money properly? But I am not seeing here a deficiency i- in terms of how we are conducting ourselves and how we're reporting on that. And so I, I, I see no issue with, uh, with approving the letter. So.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
There's a.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That brings us to reports from board members and superintendents. Yeah. Anybody want to start?
I attended the citizens' bond oversight committee meeting. It was the night after the board meeting. The, just a couple of things that they covered was the annual report for measure T and measure S, the two annual reports. That was for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, so back there, um, and they were both approved unanimously. I don't, I think they'll probably come to the board at some point their letter, but.
Yeah. Uh, the chair is finalizing them and then they'll be presented to the board for acceptance.
Yeah. And they also got the measure S progress presentation that we had at the board meeting the night before. So that was shared with the committee.
Thank you, Mike, for being on that committee. I really.
But we tag team off.
You tag team.
Well, anyway, thank. Back to school night that night.
Thank you for, for being a part of that committee. I really appreciate it.
And Rick runs it.
And thank you, Rick. Really appreciate it. So let's see, I was able to briefly stop by the, I guess they're the back to school nights. Yeah, I was open houses or at the end of, back to school nights, just at Roosevelt and Roy Cloud. And it was just fun to see all the teachers and the parents and that sort of thing. So, um, I know there's more, I think, happening tomorrow night. I'll try to pop into a couple then. Um, there are so many at one time, you really can't get to, to very many. And then, uh, we did have a workforce housing meeting, uh, kind of touching base, uh, very exciting. I know we, uh, had a submittal to the city last Friday. Um, so we're waiting here back, but we're moving along. So at some point we'll have to, uh, give an update to the whole board. Uh, but we did check in as the committee. I also had a, a meeting with a, a local developer who may be interested in helping to fund a little bit of the workforce housing as part of their community project. So, um, that's a longer term, thing, cause they're just early in their process, but, uh, it's good to know that there's some developers that are hearing about our project and interested in workforce housing. So who knows? Uh, maybe we'll get a little money there. Um, and I just kind of saying this publicly, in case the word gets out, we're always open to talking to anybody about helping to fund, uh, workforce housing or really anything in our school district. And then I did go to the San Mateo County School Boards Association Board Meeting on Monday night. And it was great to get together with all the folks in the county. Uh, we did put together a list of, uh, calendar events for the year and we're just finalizing everything. So hopefully that'll go out in the next week or two, so everybody can get it in their calendar. Uh, there's lots of great meetings coming along. There will be a new board orientation on January eleventh, so we need to let our new board members know that. That's a Saturday. Um, I will probably participate in that. My last times.
She got you a torch. She literally passed.
Yeah. And they'll have a mentorship program and everything like they have before, because it's nice if a school board member not in this district and, can be a pal with, uh, the new school board members. So hopefully that'll be good. And, uh, you know, the Kent Awards was talked about, and I think they're going to also try to do a few networking opportunities. So anyway, as soon as I get that, I will let you know.
Much more abbreviated for me, apologies. I was at the back to school night at Orion for both of my kids. Um, that was, that was neat to go and, uh, you know, learn about all the new things that are happening in schools, uh, including, I don't know if it's Orion specific, but a win blocks what I need. So there's three of those happening every, every week. So be interesting to see how that, uh, impacts, uh, achievement at the school. So that should be, uh, interesting. Did feel like a little bit of a missed opportunity to recruit volunteers to have like a mobile fingerprinting van there. Cause like, you know, you've got some substantial percentage of the parent population that's funneling in. So I just, I want to flag it that, um, whenever we're, uh, basically asking substantially all the parents to go and come to a site, we should be thinking about, uh, that is an opportunity, you know, whether it's graduations, back to school night, parent teacher conferences. What can we do with the fact that they're there? Can we ask them to get on, you know, WhatsApp channels or like get their phone numbers to go and text them messages? Like, can we get their fingerprints and get them signed up for volunteering? Like, just what's all the stuff we have on that list in terms of, uh, things that we would want to physically get in front of, uh, parents for? Just that, that might be an opportunity.
I just have the workforce housing. So, yeah.
So we would be doing a report on this in the near future, but we started our education rounds and the education rounds are, um, where, uh, Anna, Wendy, myself, Catherine Rivera, Michelle, Antonio, Jude, Maeve and Patrina, we're all the same in, in different groups. And we start out our day at, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursdays at a school site. We're meeting with the principal. It's very scripted. It's very, um, led in a manner, uh, in regard to student achievement and what we're doing for our kids at the school site. It not only talks, we're not only addressing, uh, tier one, tier two and tier three, but really making sure that tier one is being done and really making sure that data is being looked at. This year, the emphasis is definitely on tier one instruction, again, and then on two. And then what we're really looking at is that it's teachers, along with the principals at grade levels are looking at data. Now that data can be horse cast data, data can be already data. It can also be the data that is roar, that is just, did it just finish? There's stuff in roar. And, and this is to answer, to get to your question that I, I didn't get into. It's, it's, it's not your fault. It's my fault because I was in meetings all day. Roar is the test that we're giving all K through second grade. And that is helping us to learn where they are in reading. It is right now, they're piloting it here in Redwood City. This is a Stanford group that's piloting it. And they're hoping that it's going to be one of the screeners that the, that the, that the California School Boards Association is going to approve. They're using us and Redwood Shores, if I'm not mistaken. And I think there was one other school district that was out quite a bit. And so what we're learning from that is where our children are, those children from K to two, where they are in reading and then to determine if what other, what other pieces do we need to teach? Or is it at a point where we should really start looking at possibility of testing for dyslexia? So that's in place. That's what we're doing right now. There are some students who have been already, um, identified dyslexic and they are in that, uh, realm of working with the special ed department at this point in time. So we're looking at all that data and we're also making sure that the principals are meeting in grade level groups with their teachers to look at the datas on a cyclical basis. So they can determine, okay, this is your data. These are the kids that need X. What are you going to do to get them there? If they don't get there, then what are we going to do? And part of this is also to make sure that the students have had the opportunity of different interventions be even before we even start going down the, the special ed route. So we're in classrooms. It can be an eye opener for, for some of us, for some of us, um, positive and challenges. And we have room to grow and we work very closely with the principals. When we come out those observations to develop and talk about next steps. And, you know, as, as we continue to tell everyone, the pandemic is behind us. We need to move forward. And, um, there is support available and we see things that maybe the principal may not see. We discuss it. And then we turn around and develop a plan for it. So, um, our days are spent for the first two to three hours, you know, Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays at school sites. And then we come back and that's why sometimes I, I saw your text, but I go, oh my God, it's so late. Cause I wasn't paying attention to the text I was getting, um, during that time. But it's an eye opener and I'm glad we're doing it. I think it's really good. It gets us back into the classroom too. It gets us back into working with kids, which that's what we got into the business for, but we're here. But it's great to learn, to, to find out and ask these, and ask kids questions. And then we walk out of the room, okay, this needs to change. No. Or it's great. Can, can this teacher share with this teacher, you know, during their grade level? Look how successful this is happening in this classroom. And so it's a move in the right direction. I think we're really pleased about it. It's, it's, um, an extra opportunity for us, even though we know when we come back, we have all these meetings that are lined up for other items. But it, it's, it's good to get out at the school sites and see what is happening and to start moving that needle. And I'm positive this is going to have some a, a trajectory in what we're doing. Because as we look at our cast scores and we're having principals delve into the data. And, okay, there's this group here that's almost at, they're almost at the met. They haven't gone to the exceeded, but they're at that met. It doesn't take much to bump them up. And that's what you should be looking at. And at the same time, while you're bumping those kids, that you're taking the others with you. So, um, it's, it's kind of exciting to put what training that we've been trained in over the last couple of years. And then what we have done with the principals and other administrators at the school site during the summer to see this work starting to progress. So it's, it's worth, it's worth the time, I, I believe. And don't you think? I, I, I think that, and.
Yeah, it's great to be at the site. I think it's, although it's time consuming for us. I think it's valuable for not just the, you know, I tell a child, I'm like, I'll be here next, next week or they'll ask, today, today I got asked, are you coming back tomorrow again? So, you know, they get used to, to seeing us, but I do think it's great because it's good conversations with the administrators. And, um, and, and they're seeing things and we're problem solving together about issues. So I think it's a great, because they see us as more as, we're there to help coach them and support them and really move it forwards. It's been great. I just wanted to add, aside from just the feel-good feelings of being out there, the conversations we've been having with the administrators are very strategic about the data and turning that data into actionable steps within their SIPSA alignment, but also the real transition of mindset and change for join engagement and the student growth that we're seeking. So those targeted conversations, um, in, in riding the ship a little bit more than, and then we have certainly through the pandemic. That was, uh, such a, a difficult affair. So really getting back to that. And the practices and structures in place to make that happen with common grade level planning time and the use of it. What's been lovely is, you know, the additional prep times that have been available to weave in these moments within the school day. Aside from the times that the principals planned for the after school meetings that are really deliberate and intentional. So sort of getting back to where we were prior to the pandemic and we actually see that happening. You know, there's a, a saying that we have, if you're going to expect it, inspect it. And the principals do that. And so, you know, it's just another layer of being a thought partner to help in that endeavor. So, thank you.
That's great. Thank you for doing that. Um, so that's, brings us to eleven, one, two, three are all adopted budget and LCAP for the three charters. I assume we want to take those all together.
That's fine.
Okay. I assume it's just questions, right? Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I think it looked like, uh, Jeff was the one that you had a number of questions about. I didn't really have questions on what you.
I didn't have questions on what you presented. I do really appreciate you and your staff who do the oversight of the charters. It's clearly a lot of work to go through their LCAPs and budgets and make sure everything's aligned. And I do appreciate that you were able to call out on one of them, you know, some concerns that you had. I think it was partly in the way they reported, but that you did ask them to, to, uh, fix those things. So thank you for doing that. I also just think it's telling that, um, a couple of them are also seeing a lot of declining enrollment similar to us. And so it does, uh, give me pause in terms of, you know, the educational program and the budgets and all of that, um, in terms of what we're seeing. But again, they're in compliance and I think they're doing the work. So, um, thank, thank you for, for doing that.
Yeah. Well, to that, thank you for the work that you put in here. Uh, twelve point one correspondence. Yes. And thirteen one, possible other business suggested items for future agenda.
So the only other one at this point in time would be, um, the study session on October thirtieth, which was not. Yeah. And that's on the, you know, where we are with the budget.
Right before Halloween.
Yeah.
Talk about budgets. Hey, you could.
Maybe we all could.
There's something about bylaws about dress code.
Um, changes to the board meeting calendar, just the addition of the study session. All right. Brings us to the end of the agenda, eight twenty-seven. If we have a motion to adjourn?
I move, we adjourn.
There a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Right.